I'm gonna skip the little gavel thing.
Oh.
We'll call the meeting to order tonight for Tuesday, May 16th. As we begin all school committee meetings, we'll start with a mission statement. The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. We'll start with roll call.
Jeff Chalmers.
Jeff Currie.
Paul Cochran.
Mark Flaherty.
Thomas Doyle.
Ingrid Allardy. And the first order of business tonight, by Norfolk School Policy, immediately following the May elections, we start our first May meeting with the reorganization. So I'll begin tonight with looking for nominations for a -- to elect a new school committee chair.
I nominate Thomas Doyle.
Second.
Any other nominations? Okay. Any discussion? Okay, vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, excellent. So the meeting is turned over to Thomas to take the rest.
You had your chance. Thank you.
All right, so we'll go through. So we need a motion to nominate vice chair. I'll nominate Paul Cochran.
Second.
All those, all right, I guess any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on, same thing, we need a motion for KP representative?
I'll nominate Jeff.
Slash secretary, sorry to make that clear.
Is that the recording secretary? Oh, no, the secretary of KP, okay. I nominate Jeff Chalmers.
Second.
Any further discussion? One thing I put, I guess if I could ask on this was, obviously, the KP issue, a little bit news right now, and kind of a focal point. And with the understanding that you don't get to vote unfortunately, you're sort of our eyes and ears there, stating the obvious, anything you can do to advocate better financial management, increased cooperation, anything you need from us, you usually do our next report, just continue to do that, anything you can see early on that needs to be brought to our attention, please continue to do so. It's the only thing I can think of, so.
Happy to. I mean, it's been, the last couple of years has been a better collaboration between the programs, I think so because of three years ago, we had an immense problem, I mean, we've had some issues this year, of course, but three years ago and prior, we didn't involve the finance committees or the selectmen, and now we do, so.
Yeah, so hopefully get that sorted out.
Pressure.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Good luck. And then we need a motion to nominate Pam as recording secretary?
Second.
Third.
And fourth.
Okay, apparently that's happening. Any further discussion on that one? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
You get to stay here.
Sorry Pam, go anywhere.
No E.
We only need one designated bill signer and alternate, I think.
I think we had set up everyone was an alternate and then I was the primary one.
Yep, you were the primary, yep, so they just need to vote to renew that.
I guess do we want a motion just to continue the bill signing process that we have in place, where I'm the primary one and then everybody else serves as an alternate?
I make a motion that we keep the current.
We've had no issues, so.
Yep.
Make a motion that we keep the current signing policy in effect.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's, we just needed after that, right? We don't need payroll and bills, fine, we don't need separate motion for that, that's fine.
We don't need to do motions.
Okay, and then we're just going from there. I don't remember, did we actually do motions for the various subcommittees?
We just had people sign up for the various subcommittees. We didn't vote on those.
I make a motion that we keep the subcommittees as they've been, with the same members on the same committees.
The only thing for me that's interesting for me this year, after three years, I might be interested at least in participating in the budget subcommittee if there's room.
Why don't we do, all right, let's go for, so superintendent evaluation, just to clarify, so that's myself, Mark, and you, Jeff, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so we'll keep that the same?
Sure, yes.
Okay. School building, we don't need that. Tech has, you want to keep?
Yeah, I mean, essentially, we had some things implemented this year by Ingrid, and works itself out, so, I mean, my, the primary responsibility I wanted when I first created it, when I got on the board five years ago, was to have one. I mean, essentially, they had, it was non-existent, and we had a director of technology who the old superintendent fired, right before the school was built, so.
So, yes.
Kind of sounded important.
So you want to keep doing that, though?
Please.
Okay.
Do you feel the role still valid and important?
It's valid as long as technology's in the schools.
Okay.
As far as I'm concerned, and I like to be in a position to make sure that things are being put in play, but, I mean, quite honestly, Ingrid does a wonderful job with it, and whenever she needs my help, she asks, and very rarely does she, because she does a great job, so.
And we sort of restructured the tech committee, and what we did was, it used to be a standalone committee, we took the membership from the tech committee and put them on the standing curriculum committees, because as we're looking at new math programs that involve technology, we really need tech representation, so they're really embedded in all of our core curriculum committees, and then they meet periodically as a tech team, so Jeff can be the liaison for that.
Okay, that works. So Jeff Currie, as far as, would you prefer not to be on policy, or would you like to do policy and budget?
I prefer policy and budget, and as far as policy, I think we, before, we had Mark as chair, and I'd like to continue that if possible.
Okay, so why don't we keep Mark as the chair for that, you stay on that, and for budget, I mean, I can sit in on any of these, so why don't we do you, Paul, with Paul remaining as chair of budget, since he's been doing it for the few, how many years he's been on the board, right?
I've been doing it too for budget.
Because it was us, it was us three, right? It was us three right here, the budget, correct?
Right, yes.
Okay, so then officially, you replace me, and then I can just sit in whenever I want at that point, but then you three would be the budget subcommittee.
That works.
That sounds great, okay.
I don't think we can have three, because it's a quorum.
We've always had three.
Usually have two members and the chair can.
That's right, that's the problem.
I can get a legal opinion on that.
What's the concern?
It's a quorum that if we've got, because if he worked as chair, as I could sit in, so I didn't count as a member of the budget subcommittee, and Mark and Paul were on there, and that was fine, it wasn't considered a quorum, but if.
You have three members, you have a quorum in the school committee.
If we actually have a quorum, and it's actually technically a meeting, we can buy the open meeting law.
Okay.
Even though it's a closed meeting.
Would you be okay with giving Jeff a chance for a year? We do this every year, so.
And I can, I mean, I can go and get a legal opinion on what the implication of that would be. We won't have a budget meeting probably till November, so we could table that one and decide on that in June, and I can get more information.
I'm happy to not officially be part of it.
Yeah, and if, you know, and I don't mind giving it up for a year if I have to give you a shot at it, but we'll see.
Let me get information and see what they recommend, and then we can do that one in June.
I do really like that committee, too.
Sure, absolutely, I just don't have any insights into budget, and it'd be interesting for me to learn.
Careful, yeah.
I know.
All right, so we'll get back to that, if we're able to do that, then we'll go as constituted, if not, then we'll just make, we'll make some changes, but we've got some time to decide on that.
Great, thank you.
All right, I think that's everything we need, as of right now, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so then moving forward from there, so reorganization is correct, we've got all that done, public comments.
We don't have a public.
So, nothing. Correspondence, we do have a gift, which is second here, so we'll need a motion to approve this, it is a substantial gift, total of $8,586.25, all of this is from NCL, some of this gala stuff, two, basically, 2,000 of this gala stuff, and then they're also providing some funds for physical therapy supply, and then a vast sum of it is for iPads. Most of this is for HOD, so we need a motion to accept this gift.
I make a motion that we accept the generous gift from NCL.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? See, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you to NCL, that's very nice of you. All right, so, um, let's see, all right, so then we have, as we mentioned, I believe it was last meeting, Paul and I had sat and met with the folks of Teachers Association, and we were able to, in, I feel, record time, hammer out an agreement, so now we need to vote on the pending contract, so they've already approved it on, for them, so I guess what we do is get a motion to accept the contract, and then we can discuss it further as far as what it entails, probably the easiest way to go about it.
I make a motion that we approve the contract.
Go to a second?
I'll second.
Okay, as far, so what discussion, if I've ever had a chance to read through this or not, if not.
Unfortunately, I have not, I've been way too busy at work lately.
Happy to summarize it if you want.
Yeah, I mean, just kind of getting the basic thing, I mean, some of this, it's a new three-year contract agreement, I mean, I like, yeah, you want to get more of the tech, because some of this is probably better coming through as far as the individual technical stuff.
It was a really good process, we addressed several things in this contract, the first thing was compensation, and in the new three-year proposal, there's a 2% increase for teachers in the first year, in years two and three, it goes to 2.5% and 2.3 quarters, but in years two and three, there's also an additional day added to the teacher's contract for professional development, and that's to be scheduled before school opens. Most of the other things in the contract that we addressed were language issues, we cleaned up some of the language based on, for jury duty, based on what the district's responsible for covering and what the courts are for grand jury duty. We have included in the contract a line item for up to 2,500 for reimbursement for teachers that take the SEI endorsement course, that was a mutual interest for the teachers as well as the district, because we're required to place students that are English language learners in a classroom with the teacher with the SEI endorsement. If they don't have it, then they have to get that endorsement within a year of having a student with ELL needs, so it's in both of our interests. So we have a $2,500 reimbursement per contract year for SEI licensure exams. Much of the rest is things that we, they're not substantive changes, but they're tweaks that we made to the educator evaluation process. We have been, since we implemented this, requiring teachers to submit two pieces of evidence for their performance in each of the four core standards, so we just put that into the contract to clarify, but that has been our practice. We added some timelines, we clarified our expectations around how teachers submit their professional goals, and that goals have to be measurable, but they don't have to be reported in numerical form. We also changed, or just clarified again, a lot of this is practice that we've had in place, but we just clarified that if there's snow days, that the timelines in the evaluation are adjusted accordingly. We have agreed to hold off on negotiating student impact ratings, because the Department of Ed is restructuring that, and we're waiting for guidance, so we tabled that one issue. Again, we added one day to the contract year, beginning with the 2018-19 school year for professional development. We clarified and adjusted that the contract does have four half-days early release for PD, that's what's in our current calendars, we put in 15-minute travel time for their schedules, if they're going from HOD to Freeman Kennedy, or the other way around. We clarified, we did increase teacher prep time from 1:50 to 175 minutes in a week, which is about 35 minutes a day for preparation, that's competitive with what other districts offer. We did clarify the payment schedule for teachers that are attending, if they're part-time and they come to a full-day PD, they are paid there per diem, so we clarified that in the contract. And then we just clarified the language around sick time and some of the stipends. Again, none of these are really subs, they're not changes in practice, they're just clarifications of practice. We did increase longevity stipends by 2%, 3% for each of the three, next three years, and there, but the terms for longevity remain the same, teachers have to have a certain number of years in the district to be eligible for that. And then we've had side letters of agreement in the past contracts about providing professional development and what rates of pay, so we just brought those into the contract agreement, but they, again, the biggest changes for us are the addition of the extra workday for teachers, the changes to the salary scale, and then just some clarification of language issues that we both felt needed to be tightened up a little bit.
How much do the SEI, how much does the SEI cert cost?
I think it's 125, it's about $125 for the test, for the exam.
Okay, so then we got enough to cover a lot of people.
Is that accurate, Holly, it's in that ballpark?
Yeah.
All right, so, I was curious, because it didn't seem like a lot, when it came, a lot there when it came to a certification, didn't realize that it was that price.
Yeah, it's a minimum.
Yeah.
Yeah, a couple of quick thoughts, I had, myself, Paul, and Ingrid sat through these negotiations, said they went very quickly. I wanted to, again, we expressed this at the time, but again, thank the association for, this is the third time I've had the opportunity to sit down and do this, all three times, you couldn't ask for better experience, it is a frank discussion, but it's, it never gets chippy, it doesn't get personal, everyone advocates for themselves, it couldn't be more professional. As someone who does a lot of negotiation for a living, that doesn't happen too often, so, it was just, it was a very nice process, I very much want to publicly just thank the teachers, A, for that, B, their continued professionalism each and every day, it is very much appreciated, and it made it a fairly simple and seamless process, I mean, we were able to sort of get down to brass tacks, like, here's what we can do, here's what we do, and we try to compromise where we could, and I think it was, it was a good process overall, so.
Yeah, I agree with all those comments, Thomas, this is my first teachers' contract negotiation session, and it went better than I expected it would, although Thomas had prepped me and said it would, it was a very open, honest, incorrigible process, and it definitely lived up to that, and I also appreciate everything you do, thank you. Yeah, and as someone sitting outside the process, I have to say that the changes seem very reasonable and smart and logical, so, well done, everyone, good job.
Motion two.
So any further comment? So we have a pending motion, so are you all in favor of ratifying the teacher, new teacher contract as presented?
All in favor?
Aye.
No slip-ups.
All right.
It's not going to be another year, he'll, uh, okay.
So do you want to take the, do you want to sign that now?
Yeah, we want to do that now?
Yep.
Do it on camera, come on.
Uh, we can do it now, come on as well, I mean, that way.
Sign it now, I think we have a calligraphy pen.
Yeah, do a different pen for each level.
Quill pen.
Roma has it with George Washington.
I was that with that for the last page. I put in all of the salaries, you and the chief.
Don't worry.
There's one on Billard Street, it's over there, return it afterwards.
Yes.
Okay, just put the day next door next. Six, seven?
Yes.
Heard Vikings now are, they're joining.
That's been an ongoing discussion amongst the boards. I know when I coached Papuaana, this is, what, eight years ago, right before, right before my sons were born, it was new membership coming in and wanting to make that change.
They got the pen.
What about us?
Sounds like they're coming with, right?
Yeah. So, this is going to be very difficult, very difficult. But, seriously?
We were all at the table for a long time.
We're involved, we're in the school committee. Don't you dare.
We had a lot of evenings together, so. Thank you. All right.
All right.
Why'd he get a hug?
I've taken a time.
I'm just kidding.
So there. Don't wear a hat to meetings, dress up.
I hate baseball, leave me alone.
All right, move on to Ingrid's portion of the evening.
Sure, and we're going to start with facilities update, Matt's here, you can come to the mic, and you have a packet in your exhibit three to go along with Matt's presentation tonight.
Jeff Chalmers, nice to meet you. Hi, guys, we've had a busy year since last time I met with you guys, we've done a lot of, a lot of work, district-wide, we've tried to get the custodians training, sent them some classes, got them safety training, really big on trying to build them up, and they've been doing wonderful things at the school and promoting what they're, it's awesome. We got them OSHA tens, again, last year when I first started, we talked about changing the cleaning products, which went a full year now, a year and a half, and it's been doing wonderful things. We also have taken out a lot of the Lysol wipes and Safer products, which is, glad to report that. Come up with integrated pest management programs, which are in both the schools' offices and districts' offices, which was a bit of work, and we've also, we had to come up to compliance with all, several state programs we had to go with, get into, so we've started the integrated pest management, asbestos, which we have now, which we had to do a lot of testing on, we've done the Right to Know stations, and lead and copper, the LSSEA, so now in every front office, we have three-ring binders fulfilling state requirements of reporting, and so, I believe we're fully compliant with all state regulations as far as building safety and worker safety. Another big thing that's happened this year is, since I'm doing town and school, we've combined some services between schools and town, and hired a full-time HVAC technician in the town who's also working for us in the schools, and trying to straighten out a lot of issues at both buildings, which he's new, and we're having a fun week right now with the town buildings, because it's all new to me this year, and new to him, so that's been a big improvement. One thing we've been working on extensively lately has been this building with the temperature controls, they were put in, and they've had issues since day one, and so we've been trying to work with myself and our new employee and the company that does all the programming and operates the systems, and so we've been making leaps and bounds programs, so I was happy to see that it was cool in here tonight, because I was afraid.
This is the most comfortable I've felt in this room, I think.
We've been trying very hard.
Noticeable.
Yeah, I was worried it was going to be unbelievably hot in here tonight, so, thank you. This is good, well, we've been finding a lot of issues from installation, and we've been trying to correct them one at a time, so luckily, you guys and Ingrid have been very helpful in letting me get the funding to straighten out everything. Another big thing, which we're not really rolling out in the schools until the fall, is Facilities Do Program, which is an asset management program.
Love it.
It's so beneficial, I've been, we were doing it in the town, and it's wonderful, it's, not only is it doing work orders, which I have a lot of customers in the building that have a lot of requests, which now I can record everything and track it, and then eventually, for the school side, the principals or the superintendent, or even you guys, will be able to see what's going on as far as requests, and where we're spending our money, and what we're doing for preventive maintenance, so it's all going to be on the internet, and it's a great thing, and we're in our, we rolled it out in the town about a month ago, and people are now finally starting to get used to, and it's really been beneficial.
It's like a maintenance help desk, I mean, it has other features to it, but it allows us to track timelines.
Yeah, of course.
That is, it is just awesome. It's like my nickname around the house.
Well, they have school dude, too, but I wouldn't use the facilities.
Yeah.
But we really like it, we had them do an audit of the buildings, town and school, a lot of times, a lot of things we're doing is trying to incorporate both, being that I'm doing both, and trying to, and trying to find value and save cost savings as far as doing a lot of these programs, but this is fantastic, and I'm looking forward to rolling it out next school year for the teachers, so.
Good, awesome.
Hoping that'll make it smoother.
Yeah.
One thing with the guys I've been doing is I've been trying to promote the guys to do more and more and more, and try to increase efficiency, and I think if you look at the building, it looks beautiful, and very proud of, I usually have the guys, I usually hold off to after-school committee and do the floors, which we do them several times a week, but I have to do it beforehand, so the school's 11 months, or it's, we have one month left, and if you look at the floors, they're beautiful out there, and with the cleaning products, which is using no chemicals, the place is doing very well, so I'm thrilled with all the products, and we've also done a lot of cost savings, it might not seem it this year, but it's going to eventually.
He's not holding that one out.
We've been doing a lot of cost-saving things by getting rid of paper contracts and for restrooms, and we're eventually going to start seeing some significant savings, but just trying to get stock up and get it, get it all figured out.
Yeah.
One thing we're starting to do, and I just got it delivered yesterday, is last year we started doing some outdoor landscaping, just trying to keep the perimeter, because the town does outside the fence line, and about 15 feet off the property, but there's always the unknown there, so we've taken it on, so now the custodians are doing a couple of hours a week of landscaping in the buildings, which we just got the supplies for this year, we did it last fall, and we're trying to keep up and keep the school looking presentable.
Good.
Again, we also have monthly pest inspections at the buildings now, we're using non-toxic stuff, and we, on the IPM plan, which shows what we could use, but we're having the building inspected, because we were finding different, not so much rodents, but insects in the building, so we're trying to maintain the buildings healthy and keep them where they belong outside. Another thing we did recently is we replaced the AEDs in both buildings, there's one in each building, one of them failed, and they don't service them anymore, so we changed both at the same time, when we opened up, we were able to work with the fire department and use their discount, and we got a real good price on them. So, at the Olive Day school, some of the things we've been doing, is, as you guys all know about the underground storage tank, that's done, minus, I'm holding payment on one issue on that, there's a pump set that makes noise, and I'm making them try to make it quieter by, they've, it echoes through the building, they've made several attempts, and it's much better, but I'm holding them to making it much quieter, so it doesn't interfere with any learning, so, but that job went very smoothly, they did a great job. We replaced the burglar alarm in its entirety over there, we replaced the kitchen dishwasher, which the ladies over in the kitchen over there absolutely love the new one, it's really efficient, it's a, it's a much, much more efficient machine, but it's much faster, and they're, they're happy. We had to replace the kitchen grease trap over there, which was a fun find right before school was starting, we had to excavate the floor of the kitchen, and good times. That building, that building is all neumatically controlled for the HVAC, and there were a mess, we've made a lot of gains on, on the HVAC controls over there as well, where the building's working automatically now, there's still things to be tweaked, but we have a much better grasp on the building, and much better control, and I'm hoping, I haven't heard anything from the H Olive Day staff lately, which is a good thing. We've been also working on trying to get all the outside air, exhaust air, kind of balanced out, so you get a better air exchange, and kids are more alert, and we've been playing with a lot of different old equipment and trying to see what happened, every time we touch something, something else happens, so we're trying to cautiously make improvements in, little by little. The, we've been working in-house, the guys have, have really been promoting doing things in-house, and the guys have been loving having a little change of pace, and they're really passionate about, we have a great, like, that's one thing, I'm, I'm doing well, because the guys I have are awesome, and I'm very fortunate for that on the school side, but they've been taking over fixing the collapsible wall over the Olive Day, and we saved significant money this year by keeping it in-house. As you guys have seen, a lot of issues, the boiler piping and the valves and pumps, we've done a lot of work, but we just discovered another problem, which we'll be talking about later. The fire alarm panel over there, that's been my nemesis this year, it's, it's had a lot of issues, but we've, I think we finally, we haven't had an issue in a month and a half, but we were having non-stop.
Knock on wood.
Yeah, we were having non-stop problems with the fire alarm and the sprinklers, but the fire alarm was just going off random hours of the night, and we ended up finding some really good contractors that do the sprinkler work and the fire alarm, and they work together, and they've now solved a lot of problems, and, and again, we were having a lot, and it's been very quiet, so.
Good.
We did a lot of, we found some, some old article money that was available for some fire sprinkler work, so we were able to use that, and we made some huge improvements in the boiler room over the Olive Day for these, there's five zones for the sprinkler over there, and two of the zones are dry systems, and they were 24-years-old, 25-years-old, and they were having a lot of issues, and they were high-pressure, and that was killing everything, because everything was running non-stop, so we were able to take the money, we put in low-pressure valves and put in new air compressors, and we also found that the nitrogen generator, which is designed, and it was installed a few years ago, had failed, and the whole idea behind nitrogen generator is it keeps the moisture out of the sprinkler, the dry sprinkler lines, and promotes the length of the sprinkler piping, so we ended up having to change it, and it wasn't a simple change, because they don't make the unit anymore, so we had to do some relocating and get creative, but we also solved, found a lot of leaks in the system, which we fixed all that, so, spent a lot of time, this year it's been, last year was mostly all boiler stuff, this year it's been all fire alarm stuff at the Olive Day. Another thing that we've discovered recently is that the Olive Day, when we had the structural collapse, when they re-roofed the interior courtyard, they had some issues, some of the interior corners of the courtyard, they failed as far as the roofing. the interior corners of the courtyard, they failed as far as the roofing. So, we're having that all ripped out on the interior corners over the summertime, soon as school gets out, because I wanted to get it done right away.
Wait, was this the one we just did a couple of years back?
Yes, and it's under warranty.
Oh, okay.
It was a little nerve-wracking in the beginning, because when we went outside, the roof had jumped. So, we thought there was more structural. So, we had to call in a structural engineer. And it was fine. It was just how they installed the shingles. They didn't give any, any expansion. So, when the building started moving and it literally started, and the shingles started getting brittle from age and temperatures, they started popping. So, it looked really bad, but it really wasn't bad. But we did have a structural engineer come in and okay at all and made sure it was safe. And we, when it happened, Ingrid and Linda Balfour evacuated the classes and made sure it was safe. But it's, we had the contractor, RebuildX, who did all the work, had their structural engineer draw up new plans. And we're gonna do a metal inside trough and on all four corners, because three of them are affected. So, I insisted they do the whole interior over. So, that work is scheduled to, right after school's over, because I don't want to interfere with the summer cleaning.
Right.
Because I don't want them tramping through the building as we're trying to do things. So, we were able to, and we improved on their design a little bit. I worked with the building department. And we were able to kind of get them to make it a more robust improvement.
So, it's just normal?
What's that?
It actually almost worked out for us a long run. We have more.
Sure. It'll be a better, it'll definitely be a better quality.
Yeah. The intent, though, is to replace the entire roof in that building.
Right.
So, I'm hoping, that was, that was a thing that we put a lot of effort into, was applying for the MSBA grant, the accelerator repair, which we had the MSBA come out. And there's definitely a need, but we didn't qualify, because there's so many people looking for funding, that these decided to make 30-year-old the threshold instead of 20-year-old. And being 25-years-old, 24-years-old, we didn't make the threshold this time. So, hopefully, we're gonna, we're gonna reapply next year. Because the roof, parts, we've been, and the addition, we finally, after spending a fortune in one area, I just went over with another layer of shingles, because we just couldn't, could not fix the leaks. And every time they go up there, the shingles are so brittle, they're actually causing more damage.
Right.
So, they would go up and then basically.
Create new leaks.
Work their way back out and repair where they walked on.
Got it.
So, we're, that is an upcoming major expense. But we're gonna table that until we can try to get funding next year.
But the building settling was just normal building settling?
Yeah. So, when we did all the trusses, we actually went up there again.
Yeah.
And it was okay. It was just.
Superficial on the.
All superficial. It looked, it looked bad, but it was actually perfectly fine. And we had a structural engineer that the school and the town have used before, very competent guy, came out. And he was perfectly fine. And there was no deflection on the trusses or anything. So, we were all set. But it, it just looked bad.
What, what would have happened if five years from now, if we had a new roof, would we have gone through the same thing? So, does this design help us later anyway?
Well, ideally, we'd keep this new design in there. Because what they did is they, they butt it shingles together and they interwove them in the inside corners. Now, what we're doing is basically saw cutting down two feet on each inside corner, replacing the plywood, putting a metal flashing on, which I pushed for copper, but we couldn't get that.
Okay.
We have a loma.
Oh, okay, the copper.
And then they're gonna go over it. They're gonna seal it all down. So, it'll basically be nice and slippery. And it'll let the shingles be able to move and not move into each other.
Yep. Okay. Makes sense.
I talked to our building commissioner, and he was happy with that design. So.
It's certainly something that we learned as we think about bidding the roof project out and the engineering, we can raise this issue and learn from it.
Our issue is the angle on that roof is so slight that it doesn't have a good, like, it just sits on there. So, with having the metal in there, it should promote it to slide faster.
Great. Okay.
Let's see, what else have we done? Right now, we're in the middle of a project. The staff, the guys, again, are doing great work. We're installing some external video cameras. And instead of having a company come in and run all the CAT 6 wiring for them, the custodians are doing it all.
Great.
They're taking great pride in it and saving thousands of dollars by having them do that. And everything I threw at them, they've been just loving it. So, it's, it's been working out wonderful. One thing we also found is there's some money in the CPC for the playground. The Olive Day playground over there, they, as a cost savings measure, when they did that, they put in, they call them engineered wood fiber, which are wood chips. And they're just a non-stop nuisance maintenance issue. The wind blows them around, the kids kick them, they're everywhere. So, what we did is.
You actually paid for leaf blowers for that. Remember, we talked about it last year, said they could clear, because it gets, the playground surfacing at the H Olive Day is called the Smarti system. And it's almost like a, it's almost like a rug. And so, everything gets embedded in there when the wood chips. It's not like a smooth surface. It's, it's like a rug, almost.
Between the kids kicking and the wind blowing them, we'd have wood chips everywhere, non-stop. So, we were able to, we found some funding. And we're going to have a change. So, it's, the areas that wood chips are going to be the same material as what's on this playground, which is on the board in place. I, I like it. It's, I think it's aging better than the Smarti system. It's more cost, it's more, you know, it's more economical. But it's also, it seems like a really, from looking at the different playgrounds, that's, we're going with that way, because it was, seems more robust.
Okay.
So.
Lower maintenance. And it also has, you know, the, it's appropriate for fall height and things like that in the areas that that is.
Curious, how, how long do they guarantee to last?
On the, on what we're putting in?
Yes.
I think it's 20, I'd have to check, but I think it's 20 years on the board in place. Now, I mean.
Put that on the HOD roof?
You just don't let kids up there?
Looking at the Smarti system, it's, it's definitely getting UV deterioration. It's still fine, but it's fading where the Smarti system, it's.
Colors embedded in the product.
It's aging much better. So, the big thing is, everybody talks about, well, you can't go on there in high heels, which I don't see anybody going on there in high heels, because it will puncture it and cause issues. But.
The, the one issue that we do have that we'll have to put signage up is more, it's cleats. Kids coming from soccer or baseball in cleats, because the cleats will puncture the surfacing too. So, we can't have cleats on the playground. So, we just have to make sure we.
Is there a sign out there?
We do have that on the, yes. And we will put it out again.
Have appropriate signage put up.
Yeah. Because we don't have that anywhere at H Olive Day yet. But when we put it in, we'll have to.
There are a couple of small signs over here, but people are.
K P Cup is next weekend.
Soccer and baseball cleats today. They're sort of like hard plastic versus like the spikes of back in the day.
I don't, obviously, I don't monitor who goes out on the playgrounds and what they're wearing.
But some are better than others. You're right. Some of the cleats are better than others.
I'm sure there's plenty of people that are on there with cleats and it's, it's fine. It appears to be fine. I haven't, we haven't had any issues with that.
No, that's interesting.
The, one thing we're also doing is we're taking another cost savings thing is we, the guys are taking down, we had a company doing it prior to me, putting up and taking down the canvases, because the contractor made it sound like it was a really difficult thing. But after watching them, we decided to do that in-house. And saving, still on that as well.
That's the on and off back and then the one over.
Yeah.
The Olive Day as well.
Thank you.
They're shade structures that are.
Shades?
Yes. We take it in and out of time. They're not snowy days.
We used to pay someone to do that. That's kind of insane.
The contractor installed it made a huge deal about it, because when I first met him, that it was a whole, had to be in a whole fashion, had to be done properly. So, after watching, we're more than capable of doing that. So, we're doing, doing it now. Another thing we've been doing is, well, the guys at the HOD, one of the guys, full-time job, he's a landscaper. And he was able to go through our irrigation system at the H Olive Day and make some repairs. We played with the pump a little bit, because it was sucking in dirt. So, he was able to raise that and go through the heads. And we have the, we have the playfield area over there working well. And on top of doing that, he loved doing yard maintenance. And we aerate it, aerate it, and aerate it, and seed it, and seed it, and seed it, and aerate some more, and seed it. And we spent a lot of time and effort on that field or the playground, next to the playground at Olive Day. It didn't come out the way I was hoping for, because it's non-stop use. And even when we had a caution tape up, people would drive on it. I'd go there and people run bicycles on it. So, can't really keep them off. But we try. And it has a lot of use. But we're really trying to get that to look better, because it's, but it.
Patchy in places.
Constantly gets used. But we're working on that again. Another area, another thing we did is we put on the gates, which are a huge safety thing at the Olive Day, so we can block vehicular traffic during the daytime. Before, they were using portable gates and they were just having non-stop issues. It was a non-stop effort to bring them out, put them in. So, having the big gates there has made a positive impact. And the teachers, I believe, are a lot safer having them.
I think you had some concerns with the initial installation of the posts where they were. It looks like, did that get fixed?
We moved one of them. So, yeah.
Okay. Awesome.
But I'm not a big fan of those. It's much better than the cordy and style.
The blow over.
Yeah, no, definitely.
They look pretty intimidating. So.
They've been helpful.
All right. So, that's most of the stuff we've been doing over the Olive Day. The Freeman, again, I talked about, that is a building automation. We've been doing extensive work with that. And so, we have the guys coming back a couple more days this year. And, but we've made great, we're having communication issues. We're having all sorts of issues with all the equipment. So, they've been tracking out, tracing out what the issues are and fixing them one at a time. So, we're gonna see how well we're done Thursday. And also trying to adjust schedules and stuff to also appease our surrounding neighbors to try to run things less on the weekends and kind of keep everybody happy.
Big test for you tomorrow.
Tomorrow's gonna be hot as well?
I think I heard 90?
No, it's Thursday.
It was Thursday.
Thursday's supposed to be.
All right. You get an extra day.
Tomorrow's 90. Thursday's 92.
Yeah. The town buildings, they're trying to learn all that right now.
They can wait till after.
So, we've been making great improvements on that. We, one thing we've been finding, it's great having in-house staff to be able to do it, is in the classrooms in this building, they keep overheating. And we're finding that there, there's rooftop units that do the major part of the heating system. But there's also perimeter heating, and that keeps the windows from fogging up. And they have valves in there that are electronic valves. And they're failing at an incredible rate. They're out of warranty, I looked. So, we're replacing them with a better quality valve. But I just done six in the last two months. And so, in every classroom, every, every office has pretty much one of these valves. So, there, that's gonna be an ongoing.
How much do the valves run in cheap ballpark?
Valves with the actuator, with the good quality one, they're about $100, $110 a piece. But there's a lot of classroom, a lot of spaces. But I'm hoping, we're changing them as they fail. But that is something that's been happening at an alarming rate. See, one thing we also did this summer, and we're going to do it again this summer, is we stained the gymnasium floor and we resurfaced it. And that was a lot of work. Again, the guys did that and did a great job. And we're gonna try to continue on with that program for several years straight to try to level out the gym floor by adding product. So, that's something we've added to our summertime maintenance. We've had some painting done this year. As you guys, when you walk through here, you'd see. And we've done a couple of office spaces, trying to leave everything alone, but where they have needs to change the colors and whatnot, we've been doing that. We've also been doing a lot of, everything's starting to get older. And we've been working on the playground equipment, because we've been having things fail on there, hardware failing. So, the guys are becoming very proficient at fixing chain and attaching pieces for climbing things. I've been having the new guy go through all the actual rooftop units. There's eight in this building. And there's, they need constant maintenance and they haven't had, received that. So, we're trying to play, catch up a little bit with limited budget right now, going through and trying to fix things that are majorly wrong. And going to, part of that Facilities Do is we've had everything audited. So, we're going to be on a preventative maintenance schedule, which automatically populates the frequency of how we do it, and which, we're gonna play with that. But we're gonna actually try to follow the recommended schedules for maintenance and trying to keep up with things. They are very needy machines upstairs. They are very, they look great on paper, because they're efficient. But they are very, very needy equipment upstairs. So, we're gonna continue trying to catch up and then stay ahead of the maintenance needs on them. As you guys saw last year, we bought a lot of floor cleaning equipment. And I pointed out the floors, it's paying off. It's helping make the program more efficient, where the guys are being able to get more done and do other products and also improve the quality. So, that's been working out well. We work with the town. And we have the garage out back here now, which half of it's ours. And I, that's been good. We've been able to put in like a lot of our snow equipment, our snow blowers. And we started buying copy paper. Last year, we saved like $6,000 by buying a truckload of copy paper instead of buying it palletized, instead of buying a pallet, as needed palletized. So, we just ordered for next year as well, trying to buy in bulk and chop it out. And so, we, again, saved a fortune doing that. But we're using the garage to store it in. And it's working out well. And it's also provided us nice areas to try to tinker with things, because there's not really much room in the buildings for that. Another fun thing that we've had go on this year is the clocks in the building. There's two in here. Those things, in case you guys ever wondered, have a five-year life expectancy.
I would have lost that bet. I never would have guessed five years. I would have guessed like 20.
I would too. And I guess the old, old-fashioned ones, like the Olive Day, much better quality. But.
Unbelievable.
Clocks.
They don't make things like they used to.
Yeah. And we had a whole bunch of attic stock that was left for us, that we were installing new clocks and found out that they were bad. So, we ended up having a contractor come in. And we've now gone through all the clocks and everything's working. But they're failing. So, we have a couple spares. But next year, we'll be buying more clocks, I imagine, at like $150 a piece. And then, there's also a head-in unit that's also failed. But we're working with that all of its capacities. So, it's all, there's a server that you can actually go online. And you can have it linked to whatever national website for the time management. And then, you can also have all your bell schedule and whatever. It's failed. So, but the titan, we're keeping time now. And a cool thing, we were awarded like a $6,000. We applied, we applied for a couple of grants. We got the smallest of them. But we got a grant for a snow broom, which worked out really well this winter. It's just a big 36-inch wide broom. So, in the light storms, they were able to just go through and not even snow blow. And then, the heavier ones, they'd go after the fact. But by using that, it got the surface down right to the cement.
Oh, great.
And we, there, we used less ice melt. And so.
Yeah. Also, doesn't get tracked into the schools then?
Right. So, we spread that. That's a couple of days of trying to heat it up. So, but that's most of the stuff we've been doing. We've been staying really busy. And I, again, very fortunate, because you guys have been very helpful for all the needs. And should I go over what I've discovered or should I wait?
Well, we're gonna do that in one minute. Does anyone, I want to see if anyone has questions for Matt on the sort of projects or updates that he gave any?
I think you're doing an awesome job. Excellent, excellent job. I agree.
Mark, do you have a question?
I got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Who did we get the grant from for the snow equipment?
Maya, who is our insurance carrier for the town of Norfolk. They do our health insurance. They do our property casualty, everything. They do most towns. And that's where we get on our group rates for the, so they have an annual grant process. And you can qualify up to $15,000, uh, $10,000.
$10,000, yeah.
$10,000. So, we had put in a grant application for external video cameras at the Olive Day. And we also, as a backup, put in this, hoping that we'd get the Olive Day. We didn't. And the town put in a couple as well. But we were granted this. And it actually works out really, really well. So, but, so we wrote a thank you letter and everything to Maya. But we're gonna apply again next year for.
I ask you that. I hope you do it every year.
We, oh, believe me, I will.
And then, the other question I have, the OSHA 10 certificate. It says that all the staff, except for one, has been trained and certified. Is there a reason the one hasn't?
One was on vacation.
Ah, okay.
Or it was on personally. But we were actually, and through Maya, again, they offer a lot of programs through the municipalities. So, we actually hosted the OSHA course here. So, other local municipalities, they came here. And they actually had a UMass Lowell training team come out. And actually, I sat there years ago and it was really dry. And these guys put on quite a great, interesting product or demonstration in class. So, the guys actually really enjoyed it. And they learned a lot. So.
But we would have the opportunity to have that additional staff member trained at another site, probably, since it's Singleton in the future.
Yes.
Okay. And then.
Okay. And then maybe just one more, the facility dude, software. You had mentioned that, you know, it's easy for everyone to see what's being done. Is it possible to set up some way where either probably one person on the committee here can have access, not necessarily to add stuff in, but just to see what's being put in for the school?
That will be fine. I'm not gonna do that right now.
Right.
We're not rolling it out till the fall. But once we, if you'll forward me a couple of months to get it figured out, then I'll, but then there's always a history. So no matter when, you can go back and see.
You got two months. No, I'm just kidding.
That's fine. So what I've done in.
There's also reporting features in facility dude, and that might be another thing that we look at, is having quarterly reports to the committee that give you all the information about the tickets and.
So one thing we're, like, on the town right now, we're just trying to, we're rolling it out and trying to get used to it. So Matt Mallenrich, who's an awesome, awesome employee, awesome guy, just can't say enough of great things. He's actually the one who's kind of built the whole system. He's done all the data entry, and he's, so we're trying to figure out how to keep up with the data entry and then assigning and then getting, closing it. So I haven't got to the reporting part of it yet because we're still learning it. So I don't want to give it currently because A, it wouldn't apply to you right now, but it's, we will be able to report, and it will keep a history on everything.
All right.
So they'll see what we're doing, what we're not doing, what they, we're not using the cost on it because you'd need a full-time person to enter all the data in. But we're, you know, right now, I'm not tracking hours. I want to get to that point where I'm tracking how many hours the guys are spending on things. But right now, we're just trying to get equipment, you know, using the preventative maintenance, the scheduler for as far as doing the PMs on stuff, and doing a work order request. And that's what we're focusing on. And we're hoping to build out off of that. But it's, it's been great. And the town people are liking it already. They like it because they can see where we're at with their requests.
All right. See, it sounds a lot like something we're using at my job right now, where I can go and I put in a work order that I can see if it's been approved, who approved it, who it's been assigned to, and all of that stuff. I can follow it straight through, add comments if I need to.
That's all available. We're trying to tailor it to what works best, where it doesn't, you know, so it's a good workflow without having too much interaction, but, and trying to figure out how to assign things and trying to figure out how to prioritize. And so there's a lot of, it's actually great that we're not rolling it out because it'd be even, the town, I have a lot of people I deal with, but having all the school employees too would be a lot to try to figure it all out. So it's great how we're rolling it out. But I.
We're gonna let them work out the glitches on the town side before we pull it out and make sure it's, yeah, that's great.
It should be, it's a wonderful tool already for what I've played with it. So it ought to.
Good.
Awesome.
Those are all my questions.
Okay. All right. So the next item that we had on the agenda is budget transfers. And one of them does involve Matt. So if you want to stay there in case anyone has questions. So you have an updated memo that we handed out today for budget transfers. We are looking at the end of the year to close out some accounts where we have seen some unexpected savings and to transfer money to offset budget deficits that we have. So at the last school committee meeting, Todd gave a budget presentation. He talked about the state cutting the full-day kindergarten grant last spring, which meant that we had a shortfall because we fund two salaries with that for kindergarten aides. So we have a $45,000 deficit in the salary line for that. We also had to add a special education aide at the H Olive Day School partway through the year, and that was unbudgeted. So we have a budget shortfall there. Earlier this year, we talked about the need to replace the food service freezer at the H Olive Day. The insulation on that is failing, and that's a $25,000 cost, which we hoped to do this year. Piping repairs is the new issue that came up over the weekend. Matt, do you want to describe the?
Much like everything in the Olive Day, everything's older. And on the back of the boiler room, there is a manifold for different circulator pumps. So there's isolation valves, there's metering valves, and there's all sorts of valves. And we discovered a leak, so we started stripping off insulation. And we discovered it's really bad. And insulation's great because it's great for thermal efficiency and save your money, but it hides a lot of stuff. So when we started stripping back, we discovered there's, one of the lines is rotted, and the other lines look like they're ready to go. And the fear is that we addressed just the one out of the four. We're gonna create issues. So I propose that we kind of cut out all the cancer on this manifold and redo it, which I haven't been able to have anybody give me a cost estimate. But from my past and also talking to the boiler company that does the pipe fitting, I'm thinking it's gonna be somewhere around $1,000 to replace, not replace the valve, replace the valves, not replace the pumps, reuse the pumps, but re-pipe everything. It's only gonna get worse. What they, they use a fitting called Victolik, which is a way you can put pipe together. You can weld, you can thread, you can use Victolik, braze. The Victolik is great because it's quick and easy, but they use a rubber gasket in there. So those gaskets are very dry, and they're, so the fear is if we just do the one, we're going to disturb them. And they're already showing rot and leakage, which was all concealed. But we'd be best to either weld it and back into place so it's more robust, or re-thread everything. But it's, reusing the, the most expensive parts are the circulator pumps. They're thousands of dollars apiece, and there's four of them there. So I want to literally just basically isolate the system, cut out all the cancer, and re-pipe it as it was, but with all new valves and fittings. It's a significant leak, so it's going to get worse.
Would it, would you use the Vitolik approach?
I would much rather weld. It's, it costs more, but it's a thousand times better.
More durable.
Eventually, we're going to need to change the boilers. They're past their life expectancy. Those are fifteen-year life expectancy boilers, and they're twenty-five. You don't change them because they're fine until they.
Till they're not.
Yeah, they're fine till they're not, and then you have to deal with it. The thing is, we have two, so if one dies, we'll have time to, you know.
Replace.
But no matter what, we're gonna need circulator pumps because even if you change the boilers out, you're still gonna have to circulate the water in the same loops. You're not changing all the piping out of the building. So you're always going to have a need for these circulator pumps going to their appropriate zones. So the work that we do, it's gonna need to last because it's gonna always be there, as long as the building's there. So after talking, verbal conversations, figuring out the time, I came up with a job estimate, and it's gonna be with the fittings. It's gonna be around $10,000 to re-pire the back of that, potentially re-manifold it and.
Is it piping upstream from the pumps or downstream?
Both.
Great.
But there's isolation on the bottom that looks healthy. So I had, custodians are stripping off all the fiberglass insulation in the whole area, and we're gonna run without insulation in the future in that whole area. Like long streams, like long runs, it's fine, it's late. But when you have a million fittings and you have moving parts that cause vibration, it's great because it keeps the heat again, but you don't see things. And then when you do see things, it's usually too late because it, because it being warm, it also is evaporating in there because it's keeping heat in. So and the water's 180 degrees most of the time, so it kind of dries itself up. But now that the boilers are off, and the water's cooled down, and you're not seeing it, it's starting to drip and drip, and now there's a puddle on the ground, and it's actively coming out of fittings. And it's not like a massive puddle yet, but it's several feet, and it's staying fed. So it's only going to get worse. So that's something that we need to address. And I think the best way to do is just do what's due right. And just, again, the most expensive part are the pumps, and I don't see any issues with those. So we just physically take them out and reuse them, clean them up and reuse them, and just put all new fittings and weld it up and do it properly.
Great. So that's an estimated cost of 10,000, as Matt said. And then we also have an additional 9,000 that applies to the HVAC control system here at the FK, which we've been trying to repair, which, as Matt said, they found many issues that were probably from the original install. So it's taken a long time to kind of figure out and troubleshoot and correct that. We had savings this year, 10,000 in legal services, which we did not use. So we have that available. We have a savings and special ed transportation of a 10,000. We had budgeted 25,000 for teacher retirement buybacks, which we are not anticipating needing at this point. We had 9,000 remaining in the equipment replacement line at H Olive Day, and we had 50,000 allocated for private school tuition out of district placement that we have not used. So we're recommending transferring the 104,000 from the lines that I just described to cover the costs that are outlined at the bottom of the memo. That does still leave us some money to return to the town in the special education line because we had a collaborative placeholder and a special ed, private placeholder. So we do still anticipate being able to return money to the town. So we would need a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the transfers as laid out.
Second on that?
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Thanks, Matt.
The reason that we're able to do the walk-ins at the price we're doing is we're gonna use the in-house talent and their new person.
Yeah, that's right.
Otherwise, this would have been more than double the cost. But we're gonna buy the parts and use our in-house staff. And the only we're gonna have to bring in is the electrician for a couple hours or maybe a day.
So the HVAC position that was added as a shared position from the town, we're accessing 10 hours a week by giving 10 hours of our custodial time, and it's certainly paid for itself already in the first two months.
Love it. I love the creativity.
Yeah.
Really good, so, awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Matt.
Mr. Chairman, do you mind if I make a request in order of agenda? I have a meeting at about 8:30. I don't want to miss.
Okay.
Let's see, why don't we move, want to move your goals up?
Well, what, did you want to address first?
No, no, no. I just wanted to be able to make my KP report, so that way I can make, I have a conference call at 8:30. I don't want to miss the conference.
So do you want to jump ahead and do the KP report now so that you're?
Yep. Yeah, let's do the KP report, and then whatever you can hang out for is fine, and then just take off whenever I go. Okay.
We might need to do the committee minutes too because I missed the May 2nd.
Oh, okay. So we'll vote the minutes. So we'll do KP report, vote the minutes.
All right, so we'll have enough.
With Jeff gone.
You abstaining for that, we'll still have a quorum.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Report was pretty simple. I mean, we had a four-hour meeting last night. Essentially had to do with budget. Same concerns I've had before, except that Norfolk is not the concern. It's Plainville and Rentham. They're trying to get, Rentham to give up some money, and Plainville even more. And Plainville has to come up with about 91,000, and Rentham about 122. And we had a heated audience last night. It was packed.
Yeah, I can imagine.
And a lot of the concerns they had is sped concerns, why it seems like every year it's a surprise. So we've addressed that. And a lot of it had to do with concerns from the audience that there wasn't a lot of transparency. And when I say transparency, I define it as no one is telling them what's happening. And the information's getting there, but what we found out from last night's discussion is there are select groups in each town that have been pretty vocal, Norfolk being one of them. So the issue isn't so much the town of Norfolk and the people in Norfolk. It's the other towns and their ability to collaborate. So Plainville and Rentham, as an example, Norfolk created a Facebook group page, community page, where they discussed a lot about what was happening over at KP. Rentham had nothing like that created, and it was a lot of finger pointing as to who should be doing it. And then it was blamed on why the board shouldn't be more communicative. And when we provided them all the information that we did, it was, oh. So essentially, the discussions last night were very honest. And me being one of the people who made a comment, as well as a couple other people from Norfolk, we essentially said, as a community, we need to be more accountable. Everyone stop pointing fingers, and let's try and work as a collaborative group instead of everyone, you know, saying there's a problem on the other side. So we continue to try and create some advantages, and at the same time, try and balance this budget up to 4%, which is where we need it to be in order so that we don't have any cuts. And right now, we made some recommended cuts that haven't, that weren't approved. There were requested or recommended cuts that we don't anticipate to happen, as long as Plainville can, they can come up to the 4% and Rentham the same. And those cuts essentially have to do with high school world language, art, science, phys ed, and business and academic support. If we can come up to that 4%, and it's from the other two towns, not from Norfolk. Norfolk, we've already approved the four and a half. They can come up, then the cuts won't be made. If they do, they're not able to come up to that point then. So a lot of the voice last night was from Plainville and Rentham saying to their own membership, we need to do something about this as a town. So they need to go back to their own finance committees and their own school committees and be more vocal, which they haven't at this point.
Was there any discussion around, from what I've heard, it's all about how much they need to add. Has there been any conversation and more forensics done on what they already have?
There's been a little. The concern we have is we have a finance director who doesn't necessarily have the experience. And regrettably, we have some administration who are trying to point a lot of fingers as to the reasoning of the problems being solely on this one person. So there's some accountability issues we're trying to deal with at the time, and the administration as well.
Well, he's been there one year, and he's leaving. He didn't create the budget, did he?
No.
Can't point a finger at it.
That's exactly where it's, it's, I think what was probably eye-opening was the idea that the questions kept getting deeper, and they kept getting a little bit more specific. And as they did, answers started coming to light as to, you know, where the fingers were going. And it has a lot to do with the administration, specific members. So we're in the process, from a school committee standpoint, of addressing those.
They're gonna have a very hard time getting past that because that is, that sort of information is well-known.
It has been well-known.
Sitting there as a Plainville and a Rentham resident, A, you're left with, okay, what do we cut it from? I mean, they've already cut their, their schools, their elementary schools. I mean, just like everyday ambulances, I mean.
And Plainville doesn't have the economics that Norfolk does.
Yeah, and they're not, I think you're left with a sense of they're just not believing what's being told to them. I don't know if they necessarily agree with things are as dire as they are. That being said, a lot of these issues could have seemingly been planned for, potentially addressed. And then it's, there's been a last-minute scramble the last six weeks to suddenly get Facebook groups together, and, okay, yeah, that's great. And Norfolk has one, and they're very involved, and the people have really done a nice job getting up to speed in municipal budgeting at this point. It's pretty impressive. But that's, I don't know what that does for us, does for them this year though. And I don't, and then next year, something's gotta give. I mean, the process is deeply flawed. And I mean, this.
So is the presentation of the information.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Or lack thereof.
Oh, one thing I think I've noticed. The ongoing concern I've had has to do with, and this has been something I've been vocal about, the transparency. So as an example, this year, as well as three years ago, I ended up buying a domain, kpbudget.com. Reason for it was quite simple. Continually, I personally asked to have the information put in a spot where it could be found. So if you go on to the KP website, under budget, the fiscal 2017 information is there, not the fiscal 2018. You have to dive to find it, which is completely unacceptable. I made three specific requests for the superintendent to make the changes, and they were ignored. That was one. So in line with that, I also created a Norfolk365.com, which was essentially the ability of us, of residents finding information relative to education, resources, tools for the town itself. There's nothing even close to that in neighboring towns. And it's just an individual basically stepping up and doing it. And as dire as Plainville says that they are, and I suspect they don't, they have some concerns there, I think there's some accountability issues that they need to address themselves, as well as Rentham. Rentham has been back and forth for years as far as the way they've addressed things. And you both have said it perfectly, both Thomas and Paul, there is some concerns in the administration that need to be addressed. To have this an ongoing thing where, and I've seen it the last three years, where we have administration come in front of our finance committee and do a tap dance, and then it doesn't turn out the way they want it to. I'm not, I don't think this necessarily has to be fully blamed on this finance director.
I think KP, in my experience being on the committee for a while, is that they kind of say, this is what our budget is. This is all, we're only gonna show you this portion of it. Don't worry about the rest of it because that's our business, not yours.
Yeah, no, be careful the way you phrase it. It's not the committee. The committee, the amount of time we put in from a budgetary standpoint. The committee, the amount of time we put in from a budgetary standpoint, finance and school committee, is tremendous. Last, last night, being an example, four hours spent doing this. It, it is, there is a time now where there needs to be some accountability. And I think it's gotten to the point where people are just, and I know I am, tired of the finger pointing. And getting back to information where, you know, certain members are brought in front of the finance committee, and the answers aren't brought up, and they don't have specifics, you can't come to a meeting like that ill-prepared. And.
So, they say on Shark Tank, you got to know your numbers.
Yeah, especially if you're in a, you're in the administration. You need to know all of them, every line item. So.
Well, that's why I was saying at the beginning, if you'd agreed to, to serve as the, the person there again, I mean, that, that's going to be a critical role for us going forward. I mean, as we get into budget next year, and we're not over through this year, but as we get into budget next year, we develop things out. We've got to know as quickly as possible and do as much stuff as quickly as possible. I mean, I think, yeah, I don't want to belabor this point, but I mean, to me, the thing I struggle with the most was the initial budget request of, what was that, 10 and a half percent? And this, this, quite frankly, silliness that was in there. I mean, that wasn't a serious budget. And I, and I'm not really interested who did or what or didn't do what. I mean, I'm looking, we're like killing ourselves here. I mean, we debated, or we had to have to explain this for 15 minutes. We had to replace a leak pipe in a school, and like, okay, well, I think we can do it if we transfer from this. And luckily, we didn't use as much in legal and everything, and then there was just nonsense in that initial budget request. And that's, that's a problem. There's no, there's no level of trust there. So, you can only cry wolf so many times, and I think that's what you, what they've gotten. Some of the things are out of their control. I mean, unfunded federal and state mandates. I get it. We all face that. Understand that. But there's ways to think the process through better, where you don't force yourself into this situation. And as I said, I mean, I know I'm talking to essentially.
But, I mean, you, you know, Thomas, I mean, we've been on the committee for as long as we've been together on this board, and I've seen this, this KP committee go from a number of changes. I mean, we have less than half the board we had when I first got on it. So, I am probably one of, one of two people who are on the KP board who are liaisons to their town. So, changes, you know, the changes we've had as far as the school committee members hasn't been it. We've had some amazing school committee members who have put in tremendous amount of time. And I put in twice the amount of time I put on here. I mean, we meet twice a month as, at a minimum.
Right.
But I also serve on other subcommittees having to do with it. And I, in the budget calls, we have, you know, I mean, last month, I, we had five meetings for budgets. As far as I'm concerned, unnecessary. You, you can't just, you can't do this stuff last minute. You just can't. And, you know, you have to have the numbers. And like you had said, I mean, there's certain information that when it comes budget time, you have to wait for state and federal. But it's, it's the same every year. I mean, it's a certain timeframe that we're waiting for, that there are changes made. But the biggest frustration from the crowd was just the budgeting, the future budgeting. You know, why aren't we doing 2019 now? Why aren't we down to 2020? Yeah, in perfect world, it'd be great to do this, but we're dealing with an existing problem now. Let's fix this and then move on to the next one. There need to be some real, serious fixes to get this to where it needs to be. Because after three years of dealing with this, where you're pulling in the selectmen and the finance committees to collaborate on everything from each one of the towns, that tells you that the problem.
Alright, so as I understand now, I think Plainville has their town meeting, I believe, in June?
Both Rentham and Plainville meet on June 5th, the same night.
Okay. So, Norfolk's already passed the four and a half, so then we're just kind of dependent to see what plays out from there with those two. But it, Plainville had, I guess their finance committee had said three.
I believe the finance and board of selectmen were saying 3% was what they were going for.
So, there's, there's a pretty likely chance that ends up being the number.
Although, I think in Plainville, it's often debated on town meeting floor, so I don't know what that will look like. And I don't know what, that Rentham's settled on a number yet. I haven't heard.
I don't believe so.
Yeah.
Plainville's the only one I've heard at this point.
Yeah. And then, if, if Plainville were to approve 3% and Rentham goes with two, 3% will carry because we have approved more than that. So, it's two towns carry, and we wouldn't, Norfolk would not need to revote, I don't believe, if we, if the number's below what we've approved.
Yeah, we don't need to vote if somehow those two came up higher than us.
Right, then, then the town would have to revoke.
Correct.
So, our number would come down to that 3% figure and the other.
I mean, the assessment percentage is different, but yes, largely, that's essentially what it is.
Exactly. So, the Norfolk appropriated the 4.5, but if the other two towns don't vote that, no, we will go down to the, the number that is commonly agreed on.
But if they don't agree on a number, if it's 2% and 3%?
Then the 3% would carry?
Because we've already voted more than three.
We voted more. We voted 4.5.
Plainville was three, us four and a half, it will be three, even regardless, unless Rentham.
Just the middle number?
Yes.
Whatever that middle number is?
That's my understanding, is that.
Because they're both at that number, just we happen to be in excess of that number. So, therefore, it's the agreed-upon number.
So. The question was if, if one town has two and the other town has three, what happens?
We meet at three.
Because we voted above, above the three. So, you have two towns agreeing.
Oh, I see.
Right at that beat, no.
Right. So, Rentham would have to go with 3%.
Alright, so we're forced into.
Yes, because it's a two out of three, just by regional agreement, that's all.
Right.
Like, if they had both said five, we would have to go with five.
Right.
What happens in the event?
Upward and downward. I didn't know it was downward.
Yeah.
What happens in the event that Rentham doesn't pass the three, but Plainville passes the two? Do we all go down to two? And what was, what does that feel like?
It's two districts carry. So, if, if they both vote a lower number and they're in agreement, if they both voted 2.5, that would be the, the increase.
Right now, it looks like from Plainville's, I don't know, it's probably those, the worst-case scenario as far as what Plainville provide would be three. That's subject to change because, I mean, they haven't had their town meeting. That's just their recommendation they have from the board of selectmen, as well as their finance committee.
Correct.
But there's nothing, a town meeting, there could be, you know, that's Wild West, who knows?
Absolutely, it could be, you know, some serious swings, either way.
Yeah, it could go up. I mean, as, as Jeff mentioned, I mean, I, four was, I think 91,000 is what I had heard.
Ninety one, it's, it's a little over 91,000, and it's about 122.5 for Rentham.
Right, to get the most.
So, we have, we have the floor established then.
We, Norfolk go to four and a half, yeah.
Well, we've set a standard, which they do not have to comply with.
Yeah, they will not go to four and a half, no matter what. Our, our best hope is Plainville gets to four, and then Rentham sort of gets dragged kicking and screaming. And I'm not, this isn't like a commentary. I'm just like, this is a statement of fact. But as I said, I mean, if someone, they could say in Plainville's meeting, no, we're only doing two. Rentham goes to two rules a day. And then, the cuts are far more significant than what was described.
It sounds like everyone would have to go back to the drawing board for that.
Um, we would.
They would have to develop a new budget. They don't have a 2% budget proposal. They would have to go back and make a different round of cuts and bring it back to their school committee, but they would have to go with that.
An ongoing process until everyone is.
Because the cuts you described were for the 3% level?
No, I think those were for 4%.
The cuts, if those cuts were made, it's at 3%. In order to evade the cuts, we have to go to four.
Okay.
Okay, so what the items, the ones you listed out?
Yep, those are cuts that will not be made as long as we hit that 4%.
Okay.
Without hitting the four.
Classroom sizes are left alone? There's not two study halls, any of that kind of stuff?
The two study halls is something that has been, it was discussed last night. Because of some of the potential cuts, you're talking about at least, and most of the students will have that one, potentially one and a half. But if you have these type of cuts, you're talking about having, I believe there was 40% that are going to have two.
Right. Now, if it, if the number ends up being four, say if, if Plainville gets to four and is set, then Rentham is going to have to go along with that. What is the impact, what's the change this year versus next? Just, there's a lot of misinformation out there, so I want to see if we could just sort of have that out. Do you know what that is offhand? Like, they're still going to have to make some cuts. What do those cuts look like?
But the cuts, the cuts that we'd have to make wouldn't be teacher cuts.
Superficial, correct?
They wouldn't be teacher cuts.
Okay.
Yep. And we discussed that, and I don't know whether it was last meeting or the meeting before, I gave the actual, what the actual items were that would basically be concerned. And, and they, none of them are, are teacher cuts.
Okay. So, basically, the short of it is 91,000, no teachers get cut?
Correct. At 91,000 for Plainville, a little over 91,000, then they meet the 4%.
So, what are the expenses being cut then?
Um, one of the.
The expenses being cut if it's not headcount?
If it's not teacher-related?
Yes.
I believe that.
If it's not teacher-related, yes.
I might be inaccurate, but I believe Dr. Zelinski said today that they did have one student returning to the district from a collaborative placement, and they had some cost savings there that, that would help offset. I believe that's what she said. I'd have to verify. But I think that there's some, some other things that have changed slightly, and some, they were looking at teachers that are leaving the district in replacement, right, I believe.
And then, I think there was a question where the insurance was going to fall. I think they originally.
It might have some.
Well, we're still in negotiations on the insurance portion of it.
Because they were pretty high as far as what was allotted for the increase.
Correct.
And I think the thought is that could go a little bit lower, and then hopefully, there's enough there to make some difference out.
Right, to try and, you try and secure the additional savings. But again, we're still in negotiations with that. We had a meeting last night, executive session, discuss it as well.
Alright, any other question on that or other comments? Other than, good luck?
I make a motion that we approve.
They don't have to approve that one?
Yeah.
We know this for how long?
Great.
Anything else for Jeff? You get six minutes. Uh, do you, you don't have any technology, does it?
No, Ingrid actually could basically give that because it's.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, that's fine. And then, actually, why don't we vote while we're sitting here, just, just so we know there's no conflict as far as proposed meeting? Is that okay for everyone?
It works. It meets so far.
Uh, let me just look at that. I'm sorry.
I, I just got notified. I've got an issue at home I need to deal with.
Okay.
So, if we wanted to spend a few minutes and go through some of these things that can, we can vote on?
If he's going to leave.
Why don't we, we can do, most of them are informational, and I can, I can table Michael's report to the June meeting. So, these are all quick.
Anything else that need votes?
Uh.
The minutes.
We're going to do a bunch quick.
Okay.
Can we, yeah, you got like five minutes, guys? We'll just rip through a bunch of stuff?
Go for it, yes.
Okay.
Alright, so let's go.
School calendar.
I can do the 13th.
Alright, meeting June 13th. Can we do it June 13th?
Yes.
Okay, good. Uh, can we, I need a motion for both the May minutes and April minutes with Jeff Currie's and I have to abstain from one of those. I don't remember which.
I'm abstaining from the second.
April 11th minutes, can we do them together or separate?
Uh, do them separate.
Okay.
Second on the April 11th minutes?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
I, I make a motion for the May 2nd minutes.
Okay, you have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, okay. So, we'll jump back to Ingrid for the last day of school for 1718.
Yep, these are quick. There was an error in the calendar that we published. We have to have 180 school days, and there were 22 school days in May, and we only counted 21. So, the last day of school goes from the 14th to the 13th. So, we just want to approve the revision to the calendar.
I make a motion that we approve the school calendar.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi. Another thing is that we were recently advised from the legal department that the school committee actually has the authority and is required to appoint our school nurses in addition to the school physician. So, in your packet were the copies of the contracts for the three school nurses. We have three fabulous school nurses that work really hard. We have Ann Hurley at the lower elementary school, and then we have Jackie McFeely and Barbara De Giacomo, who was job share up here. So, I'm requesting the school committee appoint them to continue in those roles for the upcoming school year.
I make a motion that we approve the school nurses.
Contract for the upcoming.
Contract for the upcoming school year.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We also annually are required to appoint a school physician. The nurses have been very happy with Dr. D'Angelo. We've spoken with him. He's willing to continue in that role. It's a $2,000 stipend. He consults on, on any cases, policy, things that we have. So, I, I need a motion to approve Dr. D'Angelo as the school physician for the coming year.
Make a motion that we approve the school physician contract or agreement.
For the upcoming school year.
For the upcoming school year.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then, the last thing that I had for vote tonight, and I will hold the goals update till the June meeting, was we have been working on developing the new school vision statement. I reported out in the, the results of the survey. It was very close between the two final vision statements for the parent's side. They were 50-50 for each. And on the staff side, staff favored the act, one that was more abbreviated. It was easier to remember and thought that it would be more impactful for families. So, we're recommending that we adopt the vision statement as follows. Norfolk Public Schools Teach, Inspire, Empower, Succeed. Would like to have that adopted, and we'll use that in combination with our vision to drive the strategic planning process.
Make a motion that we approve the vision statement.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Simple is always better, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. And I will hold my goals report for the June meeting. I don't have anything further.
And the policy subcommittee first reading for the administration of medicine.
No more votes. If you guys need to. Good. That's good.
Sorry, guys.
Sorry, guys.
Okay.
No worries.
Take care of yourself. So, I guess now it's on me.
Policy, right?
Yeah.
We had a first reading scheduled on the administration of medicines to students.
And we, right now, Ingrid is going to be talking, having a meeting with the school nurses and, and the school physician about some wording, wording on it and tweaking of it. But we can still do the first reading. I think any possible changes that might be made would be incidental at best. So, it's, it's basically talking, questioning about the wording on some children administering themselves medication, certain medications, that she wants to get opinion from the, the nurses and the physician about.
We, wasn't there, there was a law change on this, or am I making?
MASC published a new model policy based on some regulation changes. And we worked from that policy in combination with our current policy and are proposing the new administration of medication policy. It does allow students with consultation from the school nurse to self-administer medications like an inhaler or things, you know, I can't remember what the other two. Inhaler or enzyme supplements are specific things that kids, especially older students, would be able to manage.
Okay, so we're at a first reading with that, is that?
We're at a first reading with that. And what Mark was saying is I do have a meeting scheduled June 13th with our school nurses and our physician to look at other policies around EpiPen, new advisories around EpiPen usage. So, I'd like to bring this policy to them just for additional feedback, and they may have some comments that we could bring forward to second reading.
I just didn't feel that we should hold off on the first reading, get the first reading done. If we have to make any incidental changes, we can do that for the second reading.
Okay, just sort of for both your knowledge, I had had someone, and I passed this on to Ingrid. Someone had asked about EpiPen availability, essentially, and what it possibly be. So, this kind of all ties together for that, so, okay, that's fine.
One thing that I had mentioned, Ingrid, with regards to this is it says in consultation with the nursing staff. I think it should be the parents and the nursing staff making that decision together.
Well, I assume that parents will be the initiator of it, so that I don't think they would approach. I mean, I'd have to see how, parents would approach a school, and then a nurse would be part of the consultation and the physician, so.
Right.
We can add that in there. There's certainly no harm in that.
The way it's written, it says consultation with the school nurse, students.
So, obviously, you're getting that from the, where's the part you're reading, Mark? Where's the section?
Under exceptions.
Yeah, under exceptions.
Okay, got it.
That requires consultation with the nurse and, and parents.
Okay, so we'll redo this further?
Yeah. So, do the first reading now, and then luckily, we don't have to vote on the first reading.
Yeah.
So.
Um, did you, is that it for policy?
That is it for policy right now. We didn't have a meeting today because we weren't officially formed, right?